...meeting for Water and State October 21st, 2019. Special meeting before town meeting. And anything new to the agenda? We're just dealing with the more, right?
Yeah.
Because you all have the regular meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Mail and bills and everything else.
Okay, starting with number one.
So we had a note in, this is the proposed change to allow medical marijuana establishment down there. Recreational marijuana establishments for private businesses. I did get a note from this morning from, I think it was Charlie Collins, who may or may not be in my petition, but asked that the town pass over action. I'm not sure, I guess he's interested in just putting together establishment. Maybe he doesn't need a change, I don't know what's going on. However, and I guess they should preference us for all the zoning articles. The planning board met on Thursday last week. They did not make any recommendations at that meeting. They are closed until 7:30, but they're going to run into some logistical problems that first they have to have a quorum, that they're going to make recommendations. Second is, I'm not sure how it's going to work because the notice and post didn't say anything about making recommendations. Third is that even if it did, let's say that we start, let's just randomly Article One and we're going to do Article One. Somebody from the planning board is going to have to get up and say, hey, planning board members, I need a motion to make a recommendation while our meeting's going on.
No.
Which isn't going to be very practical. Luckily, the recommendations are necessary for town meeting. We got to have the here as backup time. But there's no requirement that recommendations be made in order to vote on the articles. So we can still do all of this except for Article One because that was brought up a year and a half ago, voted down specifically, and can't be brought up for a two-year period unless the planning board recommends the article, which they probably won't be able to do. I'm not sure that they intended to do so, but there are, especially given that at least one of the proposers has indicated that he wanted it not voted on. I'm not sure where you all want to go with that, but...
So is that person going to come tonight and withdraw?
I don't know.
So we definitely have someone saying they want it to be passed over?
Right. But I also, but the thing is that...
But you can't pass over unless you have a recommendation?
No, well, we can't, we can't do anything in the sense of unless the planning board recommends Article One, we can't do anything with Article One because the two-year prohibition's still in place. So maybe just like when we dealt with the articles in May, we simply say, we can't take any action whatsoever. When we get, so we'll deal with Article One when that out, you know? Okay, Article Two is another petition article. This one, you know, we can do, as would now the other ones, town meeting can vote on it. This would, basically, my reading of it would eliminate marijuana establishments in Halifax because outside, because what it reads is that it's property line to property line, not facility to house. And I had queried Chris Winnewitz, who was the person who was pushing for this weeks ago, and said, you understand this is where it's going to go, you know, how it reads is, this is how the effect, and now we got a reply back from him, so...
So if that happens, that means that basically somebody can sue the town and put it anywhere, right?
Very possible, yeah. I mean, the AG's office would have to make a decision because they would say whether or not this was allowable, given that the town had voted to allow recreational marijuana establishments. And there's maybe one or two parcels at the south end of Route 58 where this would still be okay because they border other industrial parcels. There's a couple parcels across the street from each...
Down on the railroad track.
No, down at the bottom of Route 58, the Puntin' Line.
Oh, the Puntin' Line, and the Fields to the right.
Yeah, or Fields to the left. Well, no, probably not the Fields to the left, but the Fields to the right, yeah.
So like this, these lines that's right next to the solar, you know?
Yes, that'd be about it. And I don't know if that's too limiting for the AG's office. I mean, what could happen, I mean, this is what probably would happen, is if the AG's office says, no, you can't pass this, then it's not passed, the person can't sue us because then it's not a valid bylaw. If they did say it was okay, I mean, anybody can sue us, but the AG upheld the bylaw, so... And I don't know, we'll see what town meeting wants to do on that. Article Three is the typo or whatever, we're changing from 94H to 94G. That's the last piece in that bylaw, from here to there, that's the change.
So you look for an ace down here?
No, it says 94H right down in the current bylaw. It needs to say 94G, so that's the change. I don't know, are you all going to make, as a board, make recommendations on any of these?
Do we? We can, but I'll be honest with you, I don't feel comfortable making a recommendation on it because I don't even understand half of what they're doing with it.
Okay. You only got two people, if one of you is uncomfortable with that, then you can speak individually, obviously. Article Four, the only change is you see the word renewed up near the top of the bylaw, we're changing it to renewed. What this does is means that after five, someone gets it in law department, special permit, they go back and have it reviewed after five years rather than renewed. They then don't have to notify the abutters, have the public hearing, have the notice and the paper. There's nothing preventing an abutter from still going to the building inspector and saying, hey, I don't think they're meaning the stipulations of the permit, the building inspector can vote. But that can happen any day. They don't have to wait five years, they can do it one month in, two years in, it doesn't matter. So the rights of the abutters still are there, so they feel that...
Can we go back to making recommendations on these? Do you feel comfortable with making recommendations on these?
I will if you want to, if you don't want to, that's fine. Do you want to go back to the...
We can go back to it.
So why would skip over unless you feel we need to make a recommendation? Because I don't see how it's going to happen.
Okay. On number two, I would not recommend based on Charlie's information.
Okay.
So I would make a motion not to recommend.
Troy, if you're going to do this, you need to make a second, second, all in favor.
All right. Three, make a motion to recommend.
Well, second, all in favor?
All right. Four, make a motion to recommend. Because there's a change in renewed to review?
Because they're going to ask why?
Because it's less cumbersome for the permit holder.
If they don't have to pay all the expenses, they have another public hearing.
The same thing goes for if somebody else buys the piece of property for some reason they don't realize that they got to talk about, well, redoing it.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes, we're going to recommend that. Okay. Now, I'll go by.
Hello? Hello? Okay. We started about 15 minutes ago. No. Okay, see you then. Okay, bye-bye. He thought we were talking about six o'clock tomorrow night. I don't know.
What time did he say it'd be here?
He said he's on his way.
This is a multifamily?
Well, one of many multifamily articles. So the reason for this, and I'm not saying that the town has to do it, but right now, where we have multifamily dwellings and apartments that says C-167-7D2, that refers, that goes to the section of the bylaw that talks about multifamily developments. So what you've got is a use that then refers to use regulations about a different use. The idea here is to add that second use, multifamily developments, have that refer to its use regulations, and then have a new set of new regulations for the use that's there, the multifamily dwellings or apartments. What I tried to do was write it in such a way not to make any significant changes to the use regulations for the dwellings and apartments as opposed to the developments. If that's not satisfactory to you all, the planning board, the town, fine, I mean, it's a discontinuity there. I'm not, you know, someone could point that out if they ever came in for either multifamily development or multifamily dwelling or apartment and say, you've got a problem, but...
The only question Charlie I had is, the multifamily developments are limited the number of dwellings to the number of acres?
Right.
Is there any limitation to the number of units in a multifamily, multifamily dwelling?
It's, I, what I, like, I don't see any in this particular use.
There's one being cleared now, there's another one that's being...
Again, I, you know, I...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Because you'd be, you could be developing a multifamily dwelling, you know, a building to become multifamily dwelling. It's still developing it, and I build in it.
I mean, like I said, I'm happy to leave to just pass over this.
Do you want to, do you want to motion to pass over this, then?
All I'm pointing out is...
I feel comfortable recommending, so I'm going to ask that you might recommend without a better...
I mean, I think probably the best thing on the multifamily is overall is have more means of the planning board, the selectmen, ZBA, whoever else, and then use council and try and come up with a comprehensive proposal for May.
So do you want to pass over this?
I would make a pass over, yeah.
So I would make a motion to pass over this one.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
So six is, we, for instance, we're getting, we have the foreclosure on four often. It's a substandard lot. The building's been abandoned by any stretch of the definition of abandonment in the sense of, we took it over from back taxes, there are no utilities connected to it, it hasn't been used and such, but if we wanted to build a new building there, throw out the old one, put a new building in, we couldn't because the use has been abandoned. It's only 5,000 square feet. So the idea here is to allow a new building on there with a special permit from the ZBA.
But that one isn't industrial?
No, this is, this is...
Because what Amy said at the meeting was, the use is still conforming for residential.
Right, but the lot isn't.
But the lot is in that zone, so she said, she said, if the lot is in the zone...
Right.
Then the use is still valid.
The use is still valid except for the fact that the lot is not valid. It's a substandard lot.
According to our bylaw.
If the argument is that the use hasn't been abandoned, then fine, then the person can walk in to Rob and get a building permit.
But the way, because I asked her a question at the meeting about that. If the use is valid and the structure is still there...
Right.
You can't require somebody to tear down the structure?
No, but you can't use the structure either, it's been, the use has been abandoned.
But the use is a valid use.
The use is a valid use only if you get, the use is, no, well, the short answer is, the use is a valid use if the lot meets the structures of our current bylaw.
But that's not how she worded that. She said if the...
Well, except that Amy did, which way maybe we talked about? True or cross?
Question.
Okay, sorry, I was confused.
Because I asked the question, can, can you reestablish the use?
No.
And she said, yes, if it's a valid use. Just because the structure hasn't been used doesn't mean, she said that if the, if the building was in the industrial zone...
Right, but it's not.
But she said if the building was in industrial zone, then this would take care of that because the use isn't a valid use in industrial. But the use is valid if it's in the residential zone.
Right, but the lot is substandard.
In other words, if a house has been to the point where it needs to be demolished, you can't use it for what it was used before because it's unsafe. The health board comes in, whoever else comes in and says, the building can't be used anymore.
But this says it's a non-conforming use.
Right, because the lot is a non-conforming lot.
It doesn't meet the requirements of by law today saying you got to have somebody, what, a 300-foot front or something?
But that's different, though, those are dimensional requirements.
Right.
But that's not a use. Like, that's what I'm saying, is that it's...
Let me put it this way, if someone walked in right now, according to Rob, and said, I want to build, I want to re, whether it's the current structure or build a new structure, they wouldn't be able to do so.
I thought I asked Amy the question at the planning board meeting, and she said that you would be allowed to do it because the use is valid.
Well, I'm happy to have it passed over again, but, because here's your worst-case scenario. Rob says it's an abandoned use, you can't do it. They appeal to the ZBA. They still have to go to the ZBA anyway. I mean, we've been, you know, if it's a substandard lot and the use has been abandoned, we've been operating for decades that you can't then reestablish the use. If the consensus is that we can reestablish the use, fine, but I need to get that from me. I need to get from her, this article is not necessary.
Because I asked, does this article apply to residential? And she said, no, it only applies to residential uses that aren't in residential zones.
Okay, well, pass, pass over. I mean, she's not going to be here, so I would pass over.
Okay, so motion to pass over?
Yeah. Yeah, second. All in favor? Seven, multifamily development. I'm not going to speak to that in the sense of, this is the planning board's article, I'm not going to try and give reasons why they should do this. I mean, sorry.
So you want to not make a recommendation on it?
Yeah, at this point.
So no recommendation on seven? Not on eight?
Second.
Okay, so seven, no recommendation, so you voted that, right?
All right, yep.
No recommendation?
All right.
Andrew, yeah, and then you got numbers. That's number eight, no? Okay, eight, right? Absolutely, okay.
So we're not making any recommendations?
Eleven, I would be fine with, because what the change here, so they want to text that the only change is, they say it's a site plan review, saying, hi, for these types of uses, you need site plan review. And the only thing they've made a change here is multifamily development, which to me makes sense. If they're going to do a multifamily development, you should do a site plan. Whether it's, however you're going to define multifamily dwellings versus multifamily development, doesn't matter.
What happened on number eight? So we're not making a recommendation?
So we're not going to make recommendations?
No recommendation on eight, no recommendation on nine, no recommendation on 10.
Okay, eight, nine, and 10, no recommendation. That is Andrew and then Garen, you're right.
Only difference is multi, this line right here, the second line.
Yeah, right. You're adding multifamily development on that second line, those words are being added.
Now, we're on 11, is that correct?
So motion to recommend?
How are we going to explain why?
Well, I mean, even...
The differences that we're adding?
So there are a list of uses that would require site plan review. Right now, there are any commercial, industrial business, institutional apartment, multi-dwelling or municipal school building or public utility structure. We're adding to that list multifamily development to a list of uses that require a site plan review.
Okay. I'll second that recommendation.
All right. All in favor? Twelve, I'm going to let the planning board, unless you... So I don't know whether, so no recommendation on 12?
Well, they don't have to move it.
So 13 is the chapter 90. When we went to town meeting in spring, we didn't have the legislation that had been, the legislation I had been approved by the state. So now we got that, it's chapter 19 of the Act for Article 13. We'll get back to the 1 through 12. For 13, it's simply accepting, that's all we can do.
Motion to recommend?
Yeah. Second.
Saying hi?
All right. So, Tom, just to go back, for Article One, we probably aren't going to be able to deal with it because, first of all, one of the people had emailed me saying they wanted the town to pass over, and also because the planning board probably won't be able to make any recommendations in any of those zoning articles.
This is one of the people proposing the article?
Yes. That we wouldn't be able to do it anything anyhow because this is the article where the planning board would have to make an affirmative recommendation about this in order for town meeting to vote on it because it's still within the two-year window when town meeting in May of '18 voted against the same language. Article Two, the board is not recommending. This would be basically almost eliminating all the parcels that, in the industrial zones because it'd be next to a residential. Three is the change in the typo from 94H to 94G, the board's recommending that. Four is for reviewing rather than renewing permits for in-law apartments. Five, we're going to pass over, or now, is it pass over?
Yeah.
Six, we're going to pass over. Go back to land use council and talk with the board and see what might be necessary.
I think that's the way to handle that.
For seven, no recommendation, I think is the...
Yeah, seven, eight, no.
Seven, eight, nine, and ten.
So we're not going to deal with those? Well, they're not, the board is a whole ways not, it's not making recommendations. I think individually, obviously, you can speak to them.
So is it two?
11, we recommended.
Which is a site plan review, adding multifamily developments to a list of uses that require a site plan review. Right.
You feel free to pipe in if you have some concern or if you don't agree with it.
I'm not sure that we shouldn't pass over the definitions too until we review the whole thing. Which ones we talk about? Going back to seven through 10.
Well, we weren't recommending...
No, no, I understand, so I... Well, I think there's a dirty, no recommendation and that. So why don't we start back to the seven? I'm just of the mind that if we're going to go and get some professional help fixing the bylaws and reviewing them to eliminate the conflicts more than anything, I mean, we've got definitions that conflict with bodies of the language, we've got definitions that don't refer to anything, we've got bodies of language that don't have definitions. I would just assume review of all, and I'm not sure that these are going to be conflicting, but at the same time, if we're going to pass over some of the other stuff, I'm thinking we should pass over this as well. But we could talk about them individually, I suppose, on the floor. And I apologize if you can hear me.
Okay. We were missing...
Water's at council? Yes, well, I just misunderstood.
Are we meeting with town tomorrow?
Something good.
Okay.
Yeah, I had it confused. I was thinking we were meeting, typically we would meet an hour before town meeting, on the day of town meeting, so I'm thinking 6:30. Right, and I said, we did six simply because we had got, I mean, I suppose all the... You know, when you make recommendations, you're doing a file review. And you did tell me six, I just assumed it was for tomorrow, that's all. Obviously, I assumed incorrectly.
I think you just didn't want to be associated with us.
Well, you know what happens when you assume. It's not a great thing. Other than, I assumed. It's a full responsibility for my assuming. So what do we want to do, what do you all want to do with seven, starting off? To speak individually, make a recommendation one way or the other? I don't know that they're going to be particularly conflicting, but just in my thought process, I'm thinking, you know, if we're going to pass over, pass over and deal with it in total is kind of my thought process there. But I'm willing to listen to anything else or do anything else. Now, who you plan, who? For seven through 12, that's the planning board. Okay. And prior to that? 1 through six is, of course, like an articles. Okay. Have you thought about whose? No. Okay. Good, you're anticipating.
Well, put it this way, I was leaving the room.
Well, one, I think, and you all go through this with council and the town lottery, but I don't think we can, I think it's more than pass over, I think it's, we just can't take any action. Yeah, which is similar to what happened that... In May. In May, right. For two, if someone wants to, well, in this, two, the board should totally, but I think that, whether it's Chris Winnewitz or somebody else who's actually poured, it should be made in a motion. Yeah, I agree. I don't know why... Well, we did it because they did it by petition. And what we said was, we would put the article on so they didn't have to go through the petition row again because they would have needed, obviously, interest for it on the special. But it would be more appropriate? Yes, right. And Chris came early, I'll see if I can find him before the meeting, so you make the motion on two. Yeah, I, it just seems appropriate to me. Number three, if someone from the board could make a motion. I'll move it. Four, same thing. This is the review rather than the renew? Yeah, I think that's it. Five, someone make a motion to pass over five? I can do that. Six, someone make a motion to pass over six? I can do that. So we're back at seven. Wow. So 7 through 12 of the planning board, you know, there are articles, we're looking for from the board right now is whether you all want to make a specific recommendation, either just say yes, or pass over, or... Yeah, I understand. Again, I'd be inclined to pass over until we've dealt with everything in total, but I don't know if it's particularly egregious, but just conceptually. So we're not going to move them anywhere, right? No, planning board will move them one way or the other. Either, I mean, I don't know what they're going to end up doing. As I mentioned, some of the members of the board, they did meet on Thursday night, they did make recommendations. I think logistically it's going to be difficult for them to make recommendations tonight. Doesn't mean that... Doesn't mean that a member of the planning board can't get out and make a motion. They can share with that and legally, we can, the town meeting can vote on this one way or the other. Something mattered that I don't think we can specifically get a recommendation from the planning board on this. Pings us to fourteen.
Would you guys do the number twelve?
Well, I don't know whether, sorry. Does the board want to, in fact, make a recommendation on it? So number seven, just simply say, we're not making a recommendation. I mean, the recommendation would be to, we're recommending passing over, or we're not recommending, or we are recommending.
Right. I can't, it is, it's similar conflicting language stuff. Multifamily development, a development of three or more dwelling units on a single lot. It isn't clear whether they're attached or not. It, in my mind, conflicts with.
Only acreage fees, how?
Multifamily dwelling, designed to be occupied by more than two families, and that which indicates where there are more in a dwelling and which doesn't require 10 acres. I, I think there's still confusion there.
Which was the reason why we said we would pass over more than ones that we had.
Seven, eight, nine, and 10? No. You're skipping the number of.
Article five. Five, because we didn't have, this doesn't say it's a recommendation on multifamily dwellings.
Right. But, but again, I, I mean, if we're talking three or more dwelling units, you know, a dwelling unit could be in one building, it could be separate. I mean, if you have three dwelling units, do you need 10 acres? Not necessarily if you're in a multifamily dwelling because in a multifamily, what is it? Is it multifamily development or is it a multifamily dwelling? I mean, I think there's still some conflicting language. I don't care which way it goes, but just as long as it doesn't conflict.
When you have a building that you know has developed into a multifamily building, an apartment building, say, if you have three, three-tiered buildings that you want to change into a small apartment, that a multi-dwelling building? You've developed it, but it's already standing.
No, I understand. I, 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 this is again, sort of considered to be conflicting and, and this is why we're in trouble. I don't care what they end up being as long as they're definable so that you know what the heck you're doing.
Recommend pass over?
That would be my recommendation until we deal with it.
Gordon. I'm, I don't know. Think if you pass over, I think we need to lead and say that we have to have meetings and we have to actually set a meeting schedule and say, if you're going to come, this is, we're pushing the show.
Yeah, I, I, absolutely agree. And, and we need to get council on the ball so that we do it right.
Well, I think the first thing is, even before languages figure out what are we trying to accomplish.
Right.
Then we can go, then the language will follow.
Right. Like I said, I, I mean, it, it just, in my mind, it's still conflicting.
Well, my, my feeling has always been, it's not going to benefit the populace in general. You know, it's a good bylaw. And because anytime you set out to punish people, I don't feel comfortable with that.
Well, again, a dwelling unit, you know, dwelling unit is.
Well, multifamily, you're going to dwell in it anyway. It's what you call a multifamily. I mean, you know, what?
Right.
I don't understand the definition between effective development and dwelling.
Right. A multifamily, maybe, maybe dwelling needs to be removed from there. I mean, we need to look at this, the difference between a development and a dwelling. If we've got three units, what do we have? Do we have a development? Do we have dwelling? If we have three units attached, I, I'm, I'm not sure what we have.
An in-law apartment is a multi-dwelling. You get more than one family dwelling in the same building.
Yeah.
Does that go through the same process?
And then you have two families versus, to me, a multifamily is more than a.
More than two.
Two.
I agree. But looking at more than two, if you have three, what do you have? Do you need 10 acres? Is it a development or is it a multifamily dwelling? And do you have a multifamily dwelling on one acre? Can you put three unit, dwelling units on one acre?
I don't know. I think, I think the reason why they brought this up was because it is so.
Confusing.
Yes.
But I don't think it clears it up, there's no getting. I just want to clear it up. I, I don't have, I don't have a dog in the race here. I just want to be able to, everyone who looks at it knows what it means.
Same interpretation.
I think if you look at what they wrote for development on.
But we're not, we're going to pass over this.
Well, I'm saying, if, if you're going to make that change and you look at article 10.
Yeah.
Then I think it's, then, then it tells you, says for a development, multifamily development, if you look at three, it says that a minimum parcel size for multifamily development shall be 10 acres with 110 feet of frontage prior to development. Each lot containing a multifamily building shall have a 40,000 square feet in accordance with section 10 and 150 feet of frontage.
So, so basically what we have is a, is a subdivision.
Yeah.
So we don't have multifamily.
But you do have multifamily if you allow. I, I think the, the issue is that you have to have 110 feet of frontage to do anything.
You're talking about road frontage.
That's, yeah.
Not lot frontage.
Well, if you have 110 feet of frontage on, on coming to the road, then you can put in the road.
I understand. But as far as the individual, what it's calling out for is parcels, right?
No, it says that the minimum parcel size.
Shall be 40,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So how do you, how do you know that without having it defined?
No, the minimum parcel that says is 10 acres.
Right.
And then it says each lot containing a multifamily building shall have a minimum 40,000 square feet.
Each lot.
Right.
So it sounds like a subdivision.
Okay, gentlemen.
I, I'm not.
No, I think we're agreeing.
Yeah, no, no, I, I'm just saying, it's confusing.
Yeah. So, so, well, I mean.
We, we weren't.
Not recommending.
This time.
I know, and not recommending or passing over is basically the same thing. We're going to pass it over in our minds because we're not recommending it.
Well, and I think there's a difference.
Well, I think both of you have said, look, if we're going to pass over these, we're going to make a commitment tonight. That's how we say we better.
Absolutely. This has to be resolved. We have to fix it and, and to Gordon's point, we take the lead here and, and push on this thing. And again, I just want it clear. I just want everyone who reads these things, I mean, there's always some interpretation involved and everything, but for the most part, just so that everybody knows exactly what they're dealing with.
It just, I mean, the, the different, different developments that have come up. The country club gets told one thing.
Right.
The country club's told by the zoning board, each building has been a separate lot. That's what the country club's told. And then other developments are told other things. And I think that that's what the issue is, that multiple people have been told different interpretations of the bylaw.
Or, or at least different rulings that have come down, at the very least. But, but again, I, I think the bylaw isn't ambiguous enough that it's confusing. If you start talking about multifamily development, you start talking about on a 40,000 square foot lot, now we're talking about a subdivision. So I, I, I think it's confusing. All I want to do is fix it so that everybody understands it.
So can you make me understand?
Eventually. As soon as I figure it out.
Put, put the stick down. So working back to seven, does the board want to make a recommendation? Does the board want to say, we're not making a recommendation?
I, I think that we, we allow each individual to speak on it and then instead, even if you say, I recommend it be passed over and all we did. The board did not completely agree on not recommending.
Well, I don't know that we didn't completely agree, but whatever, whatever lead.
I think if we not, we don't make a recommendation, not that we're not recommending the motion, we're just not taking a position on those and let the planning board present.
And then we can speak on it individually.
Okay.
That's seventeen and ten, right?
Yeah.
Make nine, 10, 11, we've already dealt with.
Eleven, we were recommending.
Because the only change there is that multifamily development, however we're going to define it, requires a site plan review. And I think the consensus is that, yes, that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. That's innocuous enough.
Twelve, we would take them the same stance, not recommendation.
So, so would you guess, so 12, not?
Probably not making a recommendation one way or the other.
Do we got to devote that?
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
So the team to recommendation.
Make a motion to approve.
Which one's that one?
Do you want me to read this one?
Thirteen is chapter 90.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you already did it. Your motion was.
I would just, mind you, I've got a court, then it's not too many articles.
Yeah.
No, 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 I mean, do you want me to, do you want me to read?
Yes, that'd be lovely. Yeah.
Tom, you want to move fourteen? So we're passing over. This is a pilot.
Oh, you heard me say that?
Yes. So the idea here is we do not still have a pilot agreement. It's sold a farm on River Street.
We don't have.
We do not want to have one. So I'm asking if the board would recommend passing over article 14.
I'll make that motion to pass over.
Why don't you let me make it so I can speak to it?
No, no, I just meant like our recommendation.
Oh, 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 okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You can do that.
You can read it. I wrote your name. I just meant for us to pass over.
Okay.
The motion.
Okay.
So who seconded that?
I did.
I'm a little late to the party, so I'm getting confused.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
If I could even begin to explain to you.
Fifteen is for fiscal 19 bill from KP Law. They're not involved in laws. That's extraneous. So I'm asking the board to recommend approval. It's going to require a 19 spell at town meeting. Whereas we did run out of money.
Second on the account.
All in favor?
All right.
Who wants, who's going to move it?
I'll move it.
Sixteen, I think the board's going to have to move and, and see how for the police chief. I think that John can speak. He can speak to it, but somebody's got to move it.
I'll move it.
But I guess I assume the board's recommending article 16? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Well, then John can speak to it.
Motion to recommend?
A motion to recommend.
All in favor?
So 17 is the first of the two old dang roads once. What this is, is to authorize the board to get special legislation filed by our delegation to take that strip along Old Dinger Road. So that we would then end up with sufficient road frontage if we ever wanted to move forward and doing work on.
And article 18 is to sell them the parcel that's inside.
A and B.
A and B, yeah.
I would make the motion to recommend 17.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Who do you want to read that one?
Want me to move it?
Okay.
I get to do something at this time.
Why?
Do you want to do 18, too?
Sure.
So I'll make a motion to recommend.
Second. So what happens here? So what happens here is that we appropriate 75,000. We then give that to Plymouth County. Plymouth County gives us their share of ownership of the parcels A and B. We then sell A and B to the state for 150.
So we reverse ourselves, our 75 plus our 75. Right.
And the reason that we want to transfer of the property is so that we can widen the road and do work on Old Dinger Road.
Right. We have the potential.
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the whole series of transactions. You might even be doing this without that, but that's a sweetener for us.
Yeah. This is, this is a convoluted deal that we've been dealing with fisheries and wildlife forever.
Twenty-two years.
It would take me an entire evening towards 20 of everything that's happening.
And obviously, another reason is we have no particular use for the parcels, I believe, so. And then next to there is a Peterson Swamp.
Yeah. Where bears and animals play.
It's, it's just the little uplands in the middle of the swamp.
Okay. So Pam Aduchia will move 19. She has the motion and everything, but this is just to replenish the unemployment funds so the board would recommend. And we do have the source. She'll read the emotion and you won't have to delay anything other than if you all would recommend passage of the article.
Who's going to say that you're going to have?
That's right. Yeah?
Okay.
Unless you want it.
No, no, I don't. I just want to be sure somebody was doing this so we didn't sit there and.
So the board recommends?
Yeah.
Somebody make a motion to recommend?
I make a motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Pam, these, these things. Twenty is a small lot on Gold Street, which we have no use for, but it's a lot easier accepting ownership than going through tax title. Tom? Jay, you want to move?
Recommendations? Oh, recommendations? Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Sorry.
Yeah, all in favor?
I want to move it then.
Unless someone else wants to do it. I just jumped in because I thought he was asking.
You want it? You can do it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
What time you do it?
So 21, I, you know, I've been working with Kathy Dryden in UHD on devising and studying by law that was put in the water. The three major changes to it are that the conservation commission would have jurisdiction. We're only going to need permits if you disturb at least an acre of land at 5,000, not a builder's lot of 40,000. So I will reduce the number of occasions where this bylaw goes into play. And three, there'll be an operations and maintenance clause in the permitting process so that it's post-construction. So after the work is done, that people need to continue to follow up on what they've been doing. They have retention pond on the property, they're going to have to continue to maintain the retention pond, as an example.
Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, so. We should have somebody for me, no, Grandberry Boggs are outside of that because it's agriculture.
So if you have a complex that's been built and they have to have a stormwater retaining pond.
Yeah, so in first, so what say we build another Walmart?
Hopefully not.
Right.
And we have a detention, retention. Yeah. Because what happens is once the developer's gone, they're left to their own devices.
So they're going to bring the.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's a subdivision. It's a subdivision, we end up having the operations.
Yeah, when we take it. But for a while, we weren't taking them years ago. And it got kind of crazy.
Well, it really was that we were taking them over and didn't realize we were taking them over and didn't do anything about it. Simple majority for these is supposed to two, for this one, it's supposed to two-thirds on the selling. So somebody wants to recommend it?
I'll recommend. Second. All in favor? That's the last one, right?
Yes. So it's again, random order. Mark will pick them out. Figure it out.
Pick them out of the hat.
Now, Pam, I don't have a book this time, so I have to flick through all my pages.
Yeah, I mean, oh my gosh, I really slacked off.
No, I didn't have any, I didn't do a book anyway.
That's true, so we, so you slack, so I slack.
Yes. Lady.
Yeah.
That's okay, we forgive you guys.
I wasn't taking on the pen, I was just making notes.
Can we just talk about two, article two again, because Tom wasn't.
I thought we knew what.
Did we go over that one?
Yeah, we not recommend it.
Yeah. Because Charlie's, well, through the, from actions, it's basically, there's only two places in town that you might be able to do this. So that's the reason.
Yeah, down the southern end of Route 58, there's a parcel, maybe two parcels that don't afford residential agricultural parcels. These are more a concern to me, or agricultural parcels. Chris Whitewitts.
He's going to recommend.
He's the one, he's going to be the person making the motions. So if Gordon speaks to it, we not recommend.
Somebody asked why we're not recommending?
You know, it's because, um, it would kind, well, two reasons. I guess, A, would conflict, might conflict with. Well, and also, the town meeting voted to allow recreation area walk facilities. And given that, we can't zone them out of existence unless. And rather have the town meeting make that decision than have it sent up to the AG's office. And if the town meeting proves that they still owe the AG's office, they may say, sorry, can't do. In which case, the bylaw will be invalid and won't make it on the books.
Okay. Anything else to be taken up with, maybe at this time?
Because I hope you're a quorum. I hope somebody thinks that I did this just on purpose.
Well, we agreed to it, I didn't.
You're a Jets fan, you just did this on purpose. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Do it to the town meeting?
Okay, so who folks?
Gordon.
All in favor?
All right.